We'll start with the minutes of the regular session of Wednesday, April 26. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session on Wednesday, April 26, 2017, as printed.
Motion has been made by Selectman Sheehan, second by Selectman McGahey. All those in favor?
One abstention.
One abstention, Selectman Moore. Now, we have the executive session minutes of April 26, 2017.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the executive session on Wednesday, April 26, 2017.
Motion made by Selectman Moriarty, second by Selectman Sheehan. All those in favor? That's four with one abstention. Now, we have the executive se-- I'm sorry, the regular session minutes of Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session of Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
Motion made by Selectman Moriarty, second by Selectman Sheehan. All those in favor?
And one abstention.
One abstention, Selectman Moore. And now, we have the executive session minutes of Wednesday, May 3, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the executive session on Wednesday, May 3, 2017, as printed.
Motion made by Selectman Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Selectman Moriarty. All those in favor? That's three, four with one abstention. Next up, we have citizen concerns. Anyone have a citizen's concern? How you doing, sir? How are you?
Hi, I'm Edward O'Keefe, precinct two. In the past month or so, I have given some literature to Paul, some of you guys in the selectmen, Paul and Tim, and I just wanted to just publicly address what I've been-- the information I've been giving. And I have some guideline notes here, and I'm just gonna kinda just use a little bit. It's basically, when Holbrook-- okay, before this went into tax title, the 32-acre apostle, in 1984, it was deeded to Tricon, and it was the measurement of 24 acres. And by 1984, it became 32.12 acres. These were on the Plan Five, Parcel Two of the Holbrook Assessors Maps. And the last recorded deed, the actual deed of the-- of this parcel, was Book 6519, Page 146, and that listed it as being 24 acres. It's eight acres, more or less is little-- sometimes it's a little more, maybe three or four acres, but that's about-- eight acres is about one-fourth, okay, of 32. So, it's, you know, it could be by, you know, a gross mistake in size, or even, I don't wanna say fraud, but by past owners. Tricon did try to do some things in the past, and it was rebutted by you guys, selectmen, 10 years ago. You guys rebutted their claims that the forest was their land, and they really didn't pursue it. And you guys obtained this land by tax title fully in '13. I really don't wish-- this is my deep wish is I hope that you guys would not have to auction this off, of course. We've gone over this, and I really, still really, my hope that this stays into open space recreation and habitat. But if it is to go to deed, I do hope that this-- that an official survey can be done by the Norfolk County, just for the impartial, just no-- just to really keep it just away from-- just because the forest was also done this way. Just, if I could, I ask you, Tim, and I ask Paul, as town administrator and tax title custodian, that if you guys could, you know, consider that if this does go to deed, just to really just rule this big difference out. You know, it was taken as is, you know, as-is for what it was, and for it to go into deed is different than as-is. The history is just very, very ambiguous and very, very sketchy. So, I would definitely, I would definitely hope that you could consider doing that, you know? And it's just, it's been done with the forest in the past. I've, you know, gone over, and I'm on my best behavior tonight. So, if you, you know, I would, you know, that's what I do ask, and that's my concern. And you, selectmen, as well, and Chairman Dan. And I just wanted to ask that. You know?
Jim, will you look into that? Yeah, sure. My understanding, I'll ask Paul to comment, but the conditions of the sale of this property will require a survey, I believe. But Paul, could you?
Yep. Okay.
That's the guidance that we received from our town council.
This is not the first time we're running across this, worrying that, you know, where there's no meets and bounds, the court, and when this is by our previous attorneys and our current tax attorneys, the court goes by the deed that the-- is we-- no, I'm sorry, not the deed, the assessor's plan map as we have had it. So, in our assessor's map, we have always had it as 32.12 acres. And again, we've got the court, we've had, we've got the property coming up down, known as Edgewood Park. We've got acres involved there, where the grantor has said, let me just say, 20 acres, thereabouts, in whatever I do acquire. So, we're saying it could be more than 20 acres, and the court is, they don't bind by, you know, when there's nothing specific, they go back to the last known assessor's map. And the last known assessor's map has that as 32.2 acres. But yes, we are, to answer the question on the survey, we are gonna do, have the perspective by, go over and do a, and do a survey, especially cutting out the area of land that he proposed or they proposed a bid on if the successful bidder is, that, so that will be done.
Okay. Anyone else? Hi, how are you?
Tricia Greeley, Friends of the Forest. I didn't really wanna get up, but the assessor's maps changed in, I believe it was '88. It always used to be 24 acres. I have copies of the old ones, and they're also on file at the Norfolk County Deeds. And my concern is also, town meeting voted to keep 26 acres as a conservation restriction just this past month, and if there's only 24 acres, we can't keep 26. So, I would really like the, I think it would be prudent to have the survey done for free by the Norfolk County engineers. They've already plotted quite a few points out there because they did survey the forest. So, it wouldn't, I don't think it would be a big deal. It's a pretty uniform shape, as far as everybody can tell. Then we'd know it was clean, then we'd know what we have, rather than, you know, getting auctioned and pulling back and all that jazz, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we have Holbrook Town Forest Day, Saturday, June 17, at 10:00 a.m. Summer is coming, time to get out and enjoy the forest. Please join the Holbrook Forest Committee for the annual Holbrook Town Forest Day. We will meet at the Sodogrim-McKay entrance, Pine Street to Forest Road to Park Drive. There will be blessing of the forest, a guided walk, and a scavenger hunt for the children. You all may even be able to convince our chair, Dave Dingle, to share his story. Please bring water, bug spray, and a snack, sponsored by the Holbrook Town Forest Committee and Holbrook Friends of the Forest. If the weather does not cooperate, we'll notify via email if time allows and on Facebook, Next, we have vacancies on the town finance committee. The finance committee will have multiple vacancies as of June 30. This advisory committee is charged with considering any or all municipal matters for the purpose of making reports and recommendations to the town. Committee, which is appointed by the town moderator, consists of nine registered voters of the town. Meetings are held weekly from January until May, town meeting, once a month during June and July, and twice a month from September until December. Residents who would like to be considered for appointment should send a letter of interest, including any experience you can bring to the committee, no later than June 30, 2017, to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Holbrook, 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Mass., or by email to mgodfrey@holbrookmassachusetts.us. I don't see, is a senator here? I don't see the senator.
Not yet.
We can come back, okay. Next, we have presentation of Firefighters Third Annual Car Show fundraiser on July 23. I see President McCauley here. How you doing? Good, how are you?
Fine, I'm fine. I know you guys have a busy agenda, so I'll try to be brief.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Everybody? Appreciate it.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Brian McCauley, proud to be serving as a president of IFF Local 1452, Holbrook Firefighters. We come before the board tonight just to seek the blessing of the board for our third annual car show that we've been hosting at the Sumner Field. This event started two years ago. You probably used to seeing the firefighters, you know, around Labor Day, doing the boot drive and things like that, and, you know, this concept that we came up with, you know, muscular dystrophy being such an important charity to the firefighters here in Massachusetts and throughout North America. You know, we used to do traditionally the boot drive at Stop &amp; Shop, Dunkin' Donuts, and, you know, we'd make a few hundred alls. And the first year we did this event for muscular dystrophy, we raised over $10,000 alls in two years. So, it's been unbelievable. The response from the public has been great. So, we're here just to seek your blessing again. The dates are here in front of you. It's gonna be Sunday, July 23, 2017. All the dates and information have been submitted to Mr. Accord at the DPW for approval. And if I can just, I'll just go down a few things. This has become such a great event for us, but also for the community. We have the Boy Scouts involved, you know, they help us quite a bit. The police department's been great with us. So, we really encourage everybody in the community, business owners, whoever wants to come and be a part of it. This is an absolute 100% free event, and the only way we make money is basically by doing the boot drive that we traditionally did at the event. So, you know, you don't have to be a car enthusiast to enjoy yourself. We can have music, food, raffles, all kinds of things, and it's been outstanding. It's getting better and better every year. In addition to raising money for muscular dystrophy this year, because we've been so successful, we've also been in contact with the athletic director at the high school. We offered to possibly help out with some uniforms for the upcoming varsity soccer season. He said that the varsity soccer team was gonna be the next team that's gonna be up for new uniforms. So, we're hoping, our goal is about $6,000, and we're hoping to split that down the middle between the two charities, between muscular dystrophy and also helping out the boys soccer program at the high school. So, happy to entertain any questions. It's been a great success, and I certainly invite people listening at home and members of the audience to bring your family by. It's a great day, and we'll have a lot of fun, so. Any questions?
No, I think it was the last year, I know.
It's a great family event, great town event.
Yeah, great town event, so we hope to see you there, and--
Brian, what is the insurance coverage? Is it covered by the town? Because it's--
Nope, that's a great question, Mr. Moore. So, because MDA is kind of the banner charity for firefighters here in Massachusetts--
You're covered under their umbrella.
We're actually covered under muscular dystrophy's--
I think you mentioned that last year, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they have some things that we can and cannot do, but we go with them, and we have a rep that we deal with that helps us with that stuff, too, so. Any information that people at home may need, you can go to our website, www.holbrookfirefighters.org. You can contact me at president@holbrookfirefighters.org as well, and we want everyone to come. So, if you have a business in town and you wanna advertise your business, we invite you to come. Just come. We want you there. We want the whole town there, so.
Excellent.
So, that's it. So, we hope to see you there. We hope for good weather, so, all right?
Just say the date again, so everybody knows again.
It's July 23, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00, at the Holbrook Sumner Field on Route 37.
Perfect.
All right, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Gordon, I actually skipped over your report, if you wouldn't mind giving your town administrators--
I thought I was off the hook, but I guess not. That's fine. So, just a few announcements to add to what the chairman had gone over. Tomorrow's actually a big day in Holbrook. The new school is being turned over to the town as being substantially complete, so the town's insurance is picking up the school at noon time tomorrow, so it's very exciting. So, just a thank you to all of the folks that volunteered, that continue to volunteer in the school building committee and the project management team. It was a job well done, still going on, of course, but job well done by all. There will be a series of open houses, told by the schools, in the August timeframe for the public to go through. There's still, between now and then, they have to bring all the furniture in and set everything up. So, more to follow on that, but tomorrow's a significant day. The board received, as it relates to the site suitability application for TLA Holbrook, we have, as you're aware, it's moving into the public comment period. I think I had reported that was opening up on the 7th or 8th. It slipped. Now, the expectation is that that period will open up on the 14th, which is today, so I'll find out if that actually happened. But that's where we're at, and that's a 21-day period, and then that's followed by a, I believe it's a 60-day response period that DEP has to issue their final decision. So, be a lot more to follow on that. We had a position advertised for an opening on the Conservation Commission, and we had a couple of applicants that actually submitted, very well-qualified applicants. However, Mr. Stinson, who's here, who was going to resign, has decided not to. So, he pulled his resignation before the date of, he's still on the Conservation Commission, all right? And we're very happy that he decided to stay, and we hope that as, for the individuals, I'll reach out to the individuals who submitted a letter of interest and let them know that, you know, there's no longer an opening, but please keep an eye out for future opportunities there. The veterans agent position, we've had that out on the street on the webpage for quite a while now, and we have one applicant at this point in time. I have, so that's sort of a message out to the public that if there are any veterans that are interested in applying--
We don't have to appoint immediately, though.
We don't, we don't have to appoint immediately.
Last time we had the gentleman from Brockton--
We did. I spoke to him today, in fact, just to see if we got into a jam. He said he would be, a couple of things. He said he'd be happy to help out, but he can't do what he did last time. He said if you have a gap, he can provide services, and we can refer people to him. But he's also going to reach out, and it has to do with the size of the city of Brockton, you know, sharing resources with a small town. He seems very knowledgeable in this field. However, he knows some folks that might be able to help out temporarily. It just kinda takes the pressure off of us from, you know, interviewing, making a selection, and getting that all done by July 1. So, I'd like to have just something to give us a little breathing room, so we can--
Mr. Fuller, would he be willing to stick around for a couple of months if we needed him? He's dedicated.
Well, I will take that up with Mr. Fuller. Of course, that would be the first choice if we ran into an issue. So, in the meantime, though, I'm just looking for some direction from the board. I can start, you know, we have one applicant, I can interview that applicant?
Well, I think that we've had, there was some interest with the veterans agent, was it in Abington or Whitman, Mr. Crosby, who I think has some excess capacity that he was, he would be willing to take that, take that on, and I'm sure, you know, if it's a temporary stopgap--
Is he in Abington, did you say?
I think it's Abington.
Well, that's interesting, because Mr. Farrell from Brockton mentioned, he said, he mentioned a few people. I didn't pick up on the names, but he mentioned somebody in Ave on that might help, and I think he mentioned--
Either Abington or Whitman. Maybe he works in Abington, lives in Whitman, or vice versa, but he would be a good resource, I would think, at least on a temporary basis until we're able to fill the position.
So, and I'm not, I'm not, we have one applicant that I could interview. I mean, I guess I'm looking for some guidance from the board. You want me to press?
Mr. Fuller, would you have the list of veterans in town? Could we send, and no risk to them, to those people that have--
Oh, do you have--
And I've already talked to In-Town Boston, the VA headquarters, and the authorizer who takes care of this area here, she, excuse me, she'd be willing to come in if I'm gone. She'd be willing to come in and help out the person that's here. And that'd be, that'd be number one, because she's the one that we go right to, and she's the only one--
Selectman McGahey's asking if we can send, how many veterans would be in Holbrook if there was a, if we wanted to send a letter to just--
How many veterans?
Well, I just gave a list out of the people that are 60 and older, but I mean, there's about 200 and something.
300.
The list was 425, but--
Below 60? Or we sent, just to notice that there is an opening?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Do we do that? We don't normally do that for other positions. You know, maybe I propose we keep it open for another two weeks.
This is a limited position, there's not, there's 200 or 300 veterans, there's 11,000 people, so 10, 7 aren't eligible. It would be--
Yes, but we'd see if we can get in touch with the gentleman in Brockton, here we are in the middle of June, July 1 starts the year.
Oh, I think that's great.
I think, and it gives us, it gives you time to find someone to fill the position instead of rushing and doing it the right way.
Do you have a list of the applicants last time the position was opened?
I could probably--
Maybe we could reach out to, I spoke to one person, he didn't know there was an opening, and maybe if we reached out to the old applicants, maybe they might be interested.
We could do, we could do a letter. I just, I'm wondering if, would you be willing to take that on?
Sure.
Just a lot of labor of, you know, filling envelopes, and I'm just trying to think of it logistically, you know? But whatever, whatever the board wants.
I think we should at least start with contacting the gentleman in Brockton.
Again, with, what was his name, the veterans agent?
Dave Farrell. Yeah, he's gonna call me back. Okay.
I think you should do that, but I think you should start looking for a permanent person. How you doing?
So, I mean, we should probably give Tim some direction as far as, you know, timing and that sort of thing. We don't wanna, you know, be in September, and we're still discussing it.
Well, I think once we, once we, he hears back from the gentleman from Brockton, at least that'll give us till our next meeting, and maybe we can re-advertise it.
Keep it on the agenda every meeting until--
And I guess another question for the board is, would the board, if I get a call from one of these individuals who's doing it somewhere else, would the board be open to having a permanent person that has multiple towns being our veterans agent?
I think it's nicer to give the jobs to people in Holbrook.
Yep.
It's nice, and we appreciate the help you get from outside of town, but there's someone here that--
I agree, yeah.
It's also, it's not a full-time position, right?
No.
So, it's, so it's part-time, part-time position, you know, for limited, limited salary, you know?
$180 a--
Yeah, $180 a week. Is it a week?
A week isn't a bad part-time job.
No, no, not part-time, but you have to also be available--
Four hours, whatever.
You have to have flexibility, I guess, if you do have another job, you know? So, it'd either be a retiree or someone that has flexibility, so.
Mr. Stinson, did you have a question?
I was on the state. Yeah, I think you said there was 390, 400 veterans in town, but I think when I was reading the federal regulation on it, you have to be a combat veteran. So, you might have wanted veterans, but how many combat veterans as opposed to non-contact veterans? So, the number gets collapsed. If there's more than veterans, I doubt there are combat veterans. You have a smaller number to pick from.
So, we'll wait to hear back from Mr. Farrell. If you don't hear back, give him a call, and then, you know, see where, we'll keep-- Take a listen. And then we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting. We can put it on, we can put it in the paper, yeah, also.
And then, and then at the very least, we still have one person that's interested that, you know, was very interested within a couple of days of it being posted, so, you know, they, I think they have the right to be interviewed as well.
I can conduct that interview, just if--
Interview that person.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I still have more here. Similar situation, I think, with the building inspector. Not a similar situation, but we have, we have a need for a backup. Dan's still here, he's not leaving, but we need to have somebody that would be available if he was not able to be around, and so my recommendation is we just put it out on the webpage to see if there are any licensed building inspectors that would be available to--
I thought Mr. Boyle was the assistant.
Yeah, he's not, he is not a building inspector.
Excuse me?
No.
Or does he need a license?
Yeah, he needs, yeah.
So, he was not an assistant building inspector?
No. He, no. So, so there's a need, there's a need there. So, I, my suggestion is we put it out. I know, I know of a couple in town that are building inspectors in other communities that could be interested, but, and one of those has reached out and said he's available if needed, not looking for, so it really would only be if Dan's on vacation, if, you know, and they'll work that out like he's done in the past. So, it's okay with the board, I'll, we'll put that on--
Is there a salary, or there's an amount of money for the position?
It'd probably be his salary, I would think, when he's out, sort of like the electrical inspector, no, it's not--
I can't imagine him giving it up at salary.
No, no. Right, but right now, I know, like, with the electrical inspector, when he's not there, it's, they get that salary for the week, correct?
Yeah. I think we'll have to work that out, but, but the need's there, and we'll, we'll just, we'll find somebody that, so that we have the backup we need on that.
That would, that would fall under wage and salary, I would think. There must be a--
I think there's a line in there. There might be a line in there, it's just not funded, so. And then, you know, we received a letter of resignation from Jim Day, who's been serving on the zoning board of appeals for 20 years, so he handed that to me late this afternoon. I put a copy in each of your boxes. He's been, like I said, serving on the ZBA for 20 years. He's been serving as the co-chair of the permanent school building committee. He's been on the permanent school building committee for, probably from the beginning, my guess is, or since the beginning of this project, and now serves as co-chair. He does outstanding work for the school building committee, and despite my efforts to dissuade him from leaving the letter in my office, he left it nonetheless, so. But anyhow, I wish Jim good luck, and he's not--
There's always Tim.
There's always Tim, yeah. Yeah, so, so he's not going anywhere, but he's not gonna be on that committee anymore. And just, I handed out, I won't, I won't go into great detail on my report, which really is just a list of projects that we have going on. We've got the rezoning project that still we need to, I need to work on the map with the planning board and with the, our attorney. We got the LED street lighting, which we're just waiting for the contract back, which was signed by the board earlier in the month, and needs to be returned to us, and then we can submit a check, and then we'll have ownership of these. And I was talking with Mr. Woodbury, he will be coming to a meeting probably in the next six weeks with, sort of presenting a final decision on the type of lights and the whole sort of plan of installing them. He says it's about a 30, a four to six-week process once they get started, so. We've had some really good meetings on the Edgewater properties. The, the team includes Peter Brown, Dave DeLuca, we have a tax title examiner, Paul, myself, and the tax title work is, is close to near completion, and now they're just reviewing the parcels that the town owns to kinda go through the low value, the land of low value process to take possession of the others. We, I've been talking to folks about the public safety building, I've been talking to the former-- talking to the former fire chief, the architects at the school, and the current chiefs and directors. And we're going to, we're going to come up with some recommendation there and bring it to the capital committee for redoing the exterior of that building. And there are still different opinions on it we got to flush out. The economic advisory board is meeting next week to discuss the reuse for the school. Plans?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday at seven thirty. And so I did have one request, a request came to me as it relates to this. The school committee is interested in having representation on the economic advisory board as it relates to the reuse. They already have voted to turn over the south school to the town. I believe it's September fifteenth, it's right around there. So the Kennedy School still needs to be turned over to the town. I told them I would bring that request to the Board of Selectmen. And if, if you would entertain that, I will let them know that they could select a person to, to, to represent them.
They want to use the school committee?
Well, they're, they're not sure if they want, they just want to be at the discussion. They want to be a part of the discussion on it. They have to turn it over to the town in order for us to do anything with it. So I told them I would ask the board how they feel about that.
It's a public meeting if they would have access.
Yeah, they were looking to be assigned. They were asking if they could have somebody assigned to the economic advisory board, just for purposes of the, the school reuse.
What's the makeup of the committee now?
We have.
Business, business leaders.
Yeah, it's all, it's all community, business owners for the most part.
It's not a decree that it should be one member of Board of Selectmen or?
No.
Does that make for an even number?
I'd have to check that out. We've never had, the committee's taken, I think, one or two votes in the.
How many members are on the committee?
I believe it's seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
So you almost have to add two people.
Well, I think.
You don't have that even vote.
I think we have, actually, let me, let me, we have one that has not shown up since the second meeting three years ago, so.
Would they be okay with just having a representative there for input? I don't understand why they.
That's fine. I can, I can present that to them. That's all right with me. It doesn't matter to me. I think, I think it's the type of board that it's really just a discussion. It's not.
Right.
I mean, they will end up probably taking a vote, but on some of these things.
I think it's an important decision, what you do with that school. I think that that location would be the best place in Holbrook for a supermarket. You've got the school, Roycroft, and the post office. And Roycroft bought the, what were the, I keep thinking it was a shoe bond, but it was a.
Laundry mat.
Laundry mat, right? If you had that other corner, you'd have a fantastic spot. They don't want to go to up here to stop and shop because they're afraid of stop and shop in Brockton and the market, Market Basket. You have Nolan in Avon, you have Shaws and Randolph, and you have Tucci's in Amington. I think it's, I think it's a good spot to develop rather than keeping it and turning it into something that would be an expense.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe it's impossible, but I think that's the only, that's one spot. You remember Market Basket was looking for one thirty-nine.
Yep. Yeah, so I guess, and we'll talk about it Tuesday night. I guess one of the questions I have on that is if, if we're able to do a request for proposals while it's still in the custody of the schools, that would be okay as well. And then you'd at least see what the interest was, but that's what we'll.
Try everything. Mr. Roycroft is going to come to that meeting.
Oh, excellent. Good.
By, to them taking a vote, that was just going to ask the same question. If they took a vote saying they're going to relinquish this, at least the south school on a certain date, does that give us permission now to go out and do a request for a proposal?
We can.
Because that was holding us up.
Exactly.
Because they wouldn't return, they wouldn't turn it over, but now they have.
They have the building.
Yeah.
So if we have a date, so we should be able to start.
We can have it, it's, it's a project to get it.
Right.
To do the RFP, so, or, and so I would have it, whether or not we could not release it until that date, or we could release it earlier, I'll find out. But having it all done and ready to go is, and get it out there.
So would we be able to do that on the Kennedy School if they haven't turned it over?
I don't know. That's what I, I'll find, I'll find out about that.
You can certainly call people.
Yeah, I can find out. I can call Dave DeLuca on that. I feel like I asked him already and.
I mean, people that might be interested.
Could do that as well, yeah. We could, we could, we could ask that gentleman that came and spoke to us to come back to that. And we talked about having him come to one of our, our meetings. So, so anyhow, that's sort of where we're at. So I'll talk to the school, so just, they could have an, an open meetings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay?
I see Senator John Keenan in the back there. If you wouldn't mind coming up, I see you presenting overview of the budget. How you doing, Senator?
Good evening. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate it. I've got some, a fair amount of material, but I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible and kind of keep out some of the things that I thought I'd talk about. But feel free to ask any questions as I make my way through. So I guess the most important item is we just finished deliberation on the Senate version of the state budget for fiscal year eighteen. And we did that several weeks after the House did their budget. And so consequently, there are differences between the House budget as proposed and the Senate budget as proposed. And so they go into what they call a conference committee. And members of the conference committee meet, they iron out any differences between the two budgets, and that's the budget that is sent, then sent on to the governor. So this year, initially, the budget was built around revenue forecast of about $27 billion. So what happens is in December of the preceding year, the Ways and Means Committees bring in outside experts and ask them to give their best estimate as to what will happen in the economy. And as a result of what happens in the economy, how much revenue is likely to come to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And based on those revenue projections, the House and the Senate and the governor's office come to agreement on what they call consensus revenue. They then use that figure upon which to build the budget. So that, what was done this year, and the consensus revenue was about $27 billion. It's about a billion dollars more than what was projected for the current fiscal year. And it represented about 3.9, almost 4% growth over the previous year. So things seem to be pretty good in December when those numbers were being calculated, when all the experts were saying, hey, this is how much money you can, you'll have to build your budget around. So there's a couple of key components of that. It obviously is the income tax. The income tax rate here in Massachusetts right now is at 5.1%. And what a lot of people don't know is that the Massachusetts state income tax rate has been going down year after year for the most part. There were a couple of years where it does not. It's true, a reduction in the state income tax is triggered by previous year revenues. And so the income tax rate has gone down at 5.1% now, if revenue projections happen to be meet, and that's to be seen, unlikely actually, but it would go down to 5.05. And ultimately, it would go down to 5%, and that's where it would stay. So it's been on this path down to 5% over the course of several years. And each time it drops 5.05%, it can mean anywhere from 86 million to about 110 million dollars less than revenue for the Commonwealth. So a lot of people don't know that their state income tax has been going down. The other component, or one of the other components to our revenue forecast is capital gains. That's very tough to predict, particularly of late because of what's going on in Washington with the speculation about what may happen to the US tax code. There's some feeling that people are holding on to assets, those that own stocks and bonds, things that normally trade and create a gain, that people are holding on to those. And so we're not really seeing the capital gains revenues that we would normally see. And then sales tax is another component to our revenue forecast. And we're trying to get a handle on exactly what's going on with sales tax, even though the economy is doing very well and stores are busy, equally as busy as the online purchasing that's going on. And while some online stores do remit sales tax to Commonwealth of Massachusetts, well, half of them do not. If an online retailer has a presence in Massachusetts, a physical presence in Massachusetts, then they are obligated to collect sales tax. If they do not have a physical presence, they are not obligated as a retailer to collect a tax. The purchaser, the Massachusetts residents, is required or supposed to submit documentation showing that they purchased online and then remit the sales tax. But people don't. They're, one, they're not aware of it, and two, even if they are, they don't want to go through that bother. So we're not capturing all the sales tax that we could. We do have agreements with some of the online retailers such as Amazon, because they have a presence. But that's an area where our projections just don't seem to be doing as well as what the economy would suggest. So the consensus revenue was, was determined. Once that's done, the governor gets to work in finalizing his proposed budget. He submitted a budget at about 40.9 billion dollars. The House did their budget, as I mentioned. They came in with a budget of about 40.3 billion dollars. And the state Senate budget came in at about 40.8 billion dollars. So you can see that the budgets are fairly close in bottom-line numbers, but the details of the budget don't always match. One of the areas in which there is generally agreement between the governor, the House, and the Senate, with some variation, but general agreement, is on local aid. I know that's very important to the town as far as what the local aid figures will look like. Chapter seventy, which is your school money, slight increase this year in chapter seventy funding for the town of Holbrook. It went from about 5.6 million dollars in fiscal year 2017 to what will hopefully be about 5.65 million dollars in fiscal year eighteen, which is about a 0.62% increase. Charter school reimbursement is increasing, and that's just a number that the state kind of determines from what's going on in the school system as far as enrollments in charter schools. And so that will go up, and that is really reflection of how many students are moving from public schools into charter schools, and then also the reverse. And then the figures are netted out. Unrestricted general government aid, which is general local aid, that will go up about 3.9%, and that, from about 1.41 million dollars to about 1.47 million dollars. And that's, that's good news. Veterans benefits, again, it's one of those ones that's due to a formula. That's, will go down slightly, will go down from about 50,000 to 37,000 dollars. And then public libraries will go up by about 11 and a half percent. And so the figures that were offered by the government, I mean, by the governor, the House, and the Senate, they're fairly close. And overall, it is an increase for the town of Holbrook. And then there's chapter ninety funding, which the town uses for roads and sidewalks that meet certain criteria. And for fiscal year 2017, it's about 247,000 dollars. And for fiscal year 2018, it'll be about 245,000 dollars. That is also determined by way of a formula. And the chapter ninety funding proposal went through one of the committees that I chair, and we moved it quickly. We had made some suggestions as to how to approach it in a more fiscally responsible way, and also from an administrative standpoint in a way that would be more helpful to the towns. We wanted to get a multi-year authorization so that the town every year doesn't have to wait for the legislature to go through the process of saying, oh, here's your road money. The towns are always itching to get the money. Having served in local government, I know I couldn't wait to figure, you know, get that figure so we could get contracts out and get the work done within, during the construction season. But that, it went through the Senate with a multi-year authorization. And then also, we sought to limit the terms, meaning they go from a 30-year term on the bond bill down to a 20-year term. And that would have saved us substantial money for the state. But that's the way it passed the Senate, but it did not make it through the House in that way. And when they conferenced it out, it was a one-year authorization, still on a 30-year term, which cost the state substantially more. But we're going to keep at it. We're going to start early in the process next year to see if we can save the Commonwealth of money and also get the money to the communities earlier. Just some other quick Senate ways and budget items. Grants to council on agings were basically level-funded. That's money that comes into the council on aging is used for senior centermen, senior programming here in the town of Holbrook. Special education circuit breaker represented an increase overall statewide of about 277 million dollars. So it gives you an idea that that's a priority of the House, the Senate, and the governor. Homeless student, which is called McKinney-Vento Transportation, that went up, I'm sorry, that was about level-funded till last year. And a lot of communities rely on that money for students who may be in district and yet technically homeless. They may be sleeping on somebody's couch or whatever. And there is funding provided for their transportation to where they, from where they live to the community where they go to school. And then chapter seventy, I touched on as far as what the increase was. That's done on a per pupil basis. And last year, it was 55 dollars per pupil. The governor's budget came in at 20 dollars per pupil. Both the House and the Senate arrived at a figure of 30 dollars per pupil. We tried, by way of amendment, to get it back up to 55 dollars per pupil. But again, we're unsuccessful in getting that through the entire process and ultimately to the governor's desk as it stands now. A couple of other things, we were, in both the House and the Senate budget, able to get funding in for the town. We call it the Holbrook Town Facilities Funding. And it's been used to great effect here, I think, in the town of Holbrook. It's been leveraged to a great degree over in Town Hall. And we're hopeful, and I'll touch on it a little later, we're hopeful that that money will remain in the budget, get to the governor's desk, and survive the process. And it's not a lot of money, it's 100,000 dollars. But my pitch to the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and then when it comes up in the Senate, is that although it's not a lot of money, the way that the town handles the money and the way that they leverage that money, what they get for that small amount of money in, in what they do is pretty substantial. And so it's a good investment from the state and the local community. Just a couple pieces of legislation that kind of have some local impact. Brian McCauley was up here earlier testifying before you. He came to us a couple of years ago with an idea that would allow municipal employees to enroll in the GIC dental program. Presently, municipal employees through their municipality can get the benefit of the GIC, which is the state-run health insurance program for employees. They can get the benefit of that program, but interestingly, they cannot get the dental benefit. And so Fire Fighter McCauley had come to us and suggested that that's something we should explore. So we've filed legislation. I think this is the second session now that we filed it. And we're going to continue to push that because it just really makes a lot of sense. And municipalities would have the ability to get a, to get an offer from GIC or a bid from GIC on what they can do as far as dental services. And they can compare that to others out there and perhaps save the town some money. So we're going to keep working on that. Also, there's some legislation that has been filed relative to community access television. And HCAM has been a very strong proponent of this, and they're really taking a leadership role across the state. What the legislation would do would be allow local community access channels to broadcast in high definition. And it would also allow them access to the channel guide. So if you go on your TV now and you click, you'll see what's on ABC, NBC, CBS will tell you the name of the show, it'll even have some information. But when you get to your local access, that information is lacking. You don't know what show's on. It just says local programming typically. And then when you turn to that channel, it's not in high definition. And a lot of the cable packages out there now, everything automatically shifts to high def. So when you click from channel to channel, it's all in high def. And then when you click to the local access channel, it's not. And it's noticeable. So this legislation would put them on an equal footing with, with network programming as far as the quality and their ability to put on the programming guide what exactly people can watch at different times. And as I say, HCAM has been a strong proponent of that, and they've been very helpful to us in as we move that legislation along. And then earlier, there was some discussion about the school. And it's great to hear that the school will now be turned over, that it's considered substantially completed. You know, that's really a credit to everybody in the town that did the work for that school. Some communities have some difficulties getting through the planning process, through the construction process, and getting the school open. Really, what's happened here in Holbrook is a credit to everybody here at the local level, the planning committee, all the, all the different groups, school committee, and obviously this board. The work that was done really allowed that progress, that school to move forward rather quickly. And it's because municipalities like Holbrook do it well, that the school building authority is happy to participate. And their reimbursement rate is just short of 70%, which is a great benefit to the town. And I think when the Holbrook School is open and it's working, it's truly going to be a model because of its K through, K through 12 approach to education. I think you will see other small communities look to Holbrook, probably come by if they haven't already, to visit the school, seeing how it's oriented, and see the programming that's going to be offered, and start to look at that for their communities. So that's, that's very exciting. You may recall that the students of Holbrook were involved in World Peace Day, an idea that started out in the school, that came through this body, made its way through the, made its way to the legislature. And legislation was filed, World Peace Day to name, to dedicate World Peace Day here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We had the students at the State House, I don't know, it seemed like they lived there. They were here all the time. And they played a very active role in getting that legislation passed. And I would tell you, I've been in the legislature now, I'm just starting my seventh, well, into my seventh year now. And you get different pieces of legislation passed, you help our constituents. But one of the. But one of the most fun things that I've been involved in is, is that effort, and to be involved with the students in the civics club with Miri Kawa down at, out at the school. Just really incredible. And I have to tell you, when they came to the State House and testified, legislators can be accommodating and are attentive. When those students came before the committee to testify on that bill, legislators were, were just wowed. They couldn't believe that these young people got up there and testified the way they did, and how they behaved in the hearing room, and how interested they were, and how involved in the process they were. To walk in on the, on the day when the ceremonial signing, signing occurred with Lieutenant Governor Polito, it was really an exciting day for, for all of us at the State House. And I want to thank the schools for doing what they do. It's, when I tell people about the number of students who were involved in an afternoon, after-school civics club, they can't believe it. And I say, that is what happens in the town of Holbrook, so I get bragging rights on it, and I'm happy, happy to do it. The Union Street Repair, that's on the CIP and the tip, and it's, it's scheduled for FY twenty-one. We're working with Ms. Gordon and others to try to get that moved up on the list. It would be great to get that project underway, and that project will obviously do street sidewalk, make it more pedestrian friendly, more bike friendly, and really make an enormous difference from, from this intersection on down to the commuter rail station. So we're going to continue to work on that. Dry town water is an issue that's just, kind of keeps going, and it's, you know, obviously three parties involved, so that makes it difficult to resolve. But whatever we can do at the state level to, to help with that, we've tried in different ways through bond bills and budget attempts to get matching funding for any sort of capital project that may be done related to that. And, but whatever we can do to help, we're, we're happy to do it. We've been out to the, to the site a couple times, and we're hopeful that that will move along, and we'll obviously take whatever direction the town provides and, and work in that respect. I also represent Braintree, so we'll, we'll match the efforts and hopefully resolve that issue in the relatively near term, hopefully. Working with the police department, the chief came to us and had a concern about disposal of needles. As we know, there's the opioid epidemic, not only here in Holbrook but all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the chief and his officers were coming across situations where there were needles to be found, and they were concerned about proper and safe disposal of that. So we were able to work with the Department of Public Health and get some disposal containers, safe disposal containers that they could use in the cruises, and those are now being used by the Holbrook Police Department. And I want to thank the chief for, for reaching out to us and giving us the ability to go and, and advocate on behalf of the town. So that's, you know, that's kind of a brief overview of some of the things, and I guess in the bigger picture, I'll just touch on one issue. The opioid issue is something that I personally, and AJ, my chief of staff who's here, we, we stay, we're actively involved in our efforts. We've been working, in the past, we've been successful in getting three pretty comprehensive pieces of legislation passed that have been viewed as national models. And as much as we'd like to think that that's the solution, each one we thought was the solution, cumulatively, we hope that would be the solution, but there's still a lot of work to be done, and we'll keep working on that. And then just as a, as a final comment, I started with talking about the state's finances and how we arrived at consensus revenue figures and the process that's involved in doing that. And I know there's hopes, not only here in Holbrook but in every town I represent and in towns and cities all across the Commonwealth, that there'll be more state aid as time goes on. Well, despite those best projections that occurred back in December, despite all the work that went into crafting the various budgets, we are ending, coming to an end of this fiscal year with a projected budget deficit of about four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. The revenues just have not come in as had been predicted despite the best testimony and the best predictions of, of all the experts. And there's really a lot of discussion going on as to why that's occurring, and why we're not getting the revenues that we should be getting in a, in a very solid economy. And they're working on that to try to come up with the answer, and one of the answers that the senate president has, has come to, and he, it's not, he hasn't come to it on his own, but the way he represented is that our tax code is based on an economy from forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, that it, and our economy has changed. We're not a goods economy anymore, we're very much a service economy and a sales economy, and our tax code just doesn't reflect that. So we go in, we finish this year with a projected deficit of about four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars, which means that the baseline that we used, use in predicting or planning for fiscal year eighteen, it could be off by that four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars at a minimum, and then the projected growth of three point nine percent beyond that means by some projections, some predictions that we could be facing a billion-dollar revenue shortfall as we start the fiscal year. So the conference committee is crafting the budget. We don't know at this stage what the negotiations are. I know that their first meeting resulted in them basically taking a step back and saying, why don't we wait till we get the final revenue numbers for the year? So we're facing a tough time from an economic standpoint at the state level. And another indicator of that is that Standard and Poor's just lowered the state's bond rating from double A plus to double A. Not a dramatic drop, shouldn't have any major impact on what we sell our bonds, what rate we sell our bonds at, but nonetheless, it's a, an expression of concern by the ratings agencies that the state's fiscal situation, while overall very sound and solid, and that's reflected in the double A rating and higher ratings by a couple of the other agencies, that there are some causes for concern. And in particular, they focused on our stabilization account, our rainy day account. It is nowhere near what it was before the downfall in two thousand and eight, and we have been unsuccessful in building that up to the level that Standard and Poor's would like to see that. We have been successful in reducing our reliance on one-time revenues, but we have not been successful in replenishing the rainy day account. And absent that, it's unlikely that we will see Standard and Poor's increase our bond rating. I personally think that the way we will have to do that will be through direct budgeting of funds for the stabilization count. Only then will the ratings agencies perceive us to be serious about addressing that issue. And in being the chair of the bonding committee, we look all the time at what our bonding, you know, our debt, what our debt ratios are, and what we can afford to bond each year. The governor's introduced two bond bills of late, one for housing and one kind of a broad capital needs bond, which we were discussing as recently as this afternoon in the office. So we'll watch those in the context of where our overall budget is. So solid, stable, but we could be doing better. We're trying to figure out the revenue picture, and I'm confident that even as we try to sort all that out, that there is a commitment in the legislature, and I agree with the governor, to keep local aid as high as possible and make that one of the last areas that would be impacted by any sort of budget cut. With that, open any questions that anybody may have?
I was wondering about, you were saying that you're unable to collect the taxes from the Amazon-type people, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I don't mean Amazon, but like that.
Online, online retailers.
Why are we not able to collect it?
We are basically preempted by federal law. There's been court decisions that say, absent a, a physical presence or a nexus between the, the company and where the sales tax is levied, that you can't do it. But some have started to do it by agreement, and so we are getting some revenue. But we face, and we face the same thing when people go to New Hampshire and purchase something.
Yeah.
The purchaser is obligated to pay the sales tax. But if they don't fill out the form, nobody knows what they purchased in New Hampshire, and New Hampshire doesn't have to report it to the state. So it's the same thing as if it's an online retailer. They don't have a presence in Massachusetts, so they don't have an obligation to report it. It's up to the purchaser, and that just doesn't occur as it would if they went into a local store.
Can you isolate a value added tax to that type of business?
Um, no, there's been some attempts. It's, it's really difficult to calculate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, we have, there's a, there's a retailers group here in Massachusetts that really focuses on main streets. And they are pretty aggressive in trying to figure out the answer to this, because they look at it, a store comes into a community, they build the store or build out the store, they sell to local customers, they get involved in the community sponsoring different events and so forth, sports teams, they pay local property taxes. Sometimes if there's a split tax rate, they pay at the higher commercial rate. They do all of that. And yet you can go online in a matter of two minutes, find the same product for a cheaper price and not have to pay the sales tax. And that online retailer isn't in the community, isn't doing community-based activities, isn't paying property tax. So you can see the margins for online are enormous. And, but it's a challenge because of federal law in trying to collect that money.
Do you know how much we do collect?
I could get that figured out, drop my head.
I just wanted, how much we're losing?
Uh, there's some estimates that we're probably losing, and I don't know the figure of total sales, but that we're probably not collecting, we're only collecting probably about half of what we could, which is pretty, pretty significant. Now look at the younger generation.
Have it into the four thirty-nine, or would it be more than that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. So we shall see.
Any other questions?
So obviously, thank you for being such a great friend and advocate for Holbrook, and the residents, certainly the school age children, I think definitely appreciate your assistance over the years. And as much as, you know, they're impressing you and your colleagues, you know, your efforts are certainly impressing us, so we appreciate that friendship that you've had over the years. I know this wasn't a, a question that, that I was thinking about, but with all the activity on Beacon Hill today about marijuana legislation, the changing of kind of what was voted on, I'm not sure if you can speak to that, you know, briefly, and, and where you see it heading?
Sure. Thanks for bringing that, I should, I should cover that initially because I have it here in my notes. But, so the ballot question passed, and as a result of that passing, the legislature set up a special commission or a special committee on marijuana. And Representative Mark Cusack, who was hoping to be here this evening, but he's tied up, quite frankly, with this legislation, he was appointed the house chair of the special committee, and Senator Pat Jalen from Somerville was appointed the senate chair. And so they've met several times, they've reviewed all the bills that had been filed relative to regulating marijuana. They went across the state and held a series of meetings and hearings, and they worked on some legislation. And the House version of that legislation was released from committee today, and there was an expectation that they may vote on it tomorrow. That expectation has been somewhat diminished over the last couple hours, so it remains to be seen whether the House takes any action on it. And some of the big differences between what was passed by the voters and what the House bill provides is, one is on the effective tax rate. The ballot question would make recreational marijuana subject to the sales tax, then a three point seven five excise marijuana tax, and then a two percent local tax. That was the extent of taxation under the ballot question. And the tax that was set forth in the bill that was released today, or, you know, was released today by the committee would put the tax at twenty-eight percent. That's been a topic of much debate in the legislature. I know Senator Jalen has a concern that if the tax is too high, that people will still continue to buy marijuana on the black market, and there'll be no taxes as a result. And there's a concern that if the tax is too low, then the state won't get enough revenue or realize enough revenue to regulate the industry. So there'll be an effort in the short term to try to find a number that generates enough income, enough revenue to regulate the industry properly, and has enough of an impact that it doesn't make people stay in the black market. The twenty-eight percent is on the higher end of taxes, it's certainly lower than what Maine recently passed, it's not as high as Washington. But that's an issue that I think is really going to be a kind of hot-button issue in this debate going forward. And the other one is local control. One of the black market concerns is, one of the concerns about the black market is if you legalize marijuana and yet you don't provide enough dispensaries, then people who are allowed under law, as they are now, state law, to possess marijuana will, will buy it on the black market. If there's no dispensary nearby, they'll just buy it on, on the street. And again, the state won't get any revenue from that, there's some quality concerns about it. So they're trying to find the best way to handle that. And in the original legislation, it provided that if a municipality wanted to relieve itself of the obligations of the medical marijuana, of the recreational marijuana law, then it had to hold a referendum. And the bill that came out of the committee today was that the governing body of a municipality may vote to reject the adult use of cannabis in its entirety, but it cannot ban the transport, cannot prohibit the sighting of an adult use retailer in a location that's previously been approved for a, a medical marijuana facility. So it's changed that part of the ballot question, and I think that will continue to be a hot topic that's addressed. Some would like to have it so that municipalities could perhaps by just a vote of this board, say not in our community. And the advocates for the marijuana legalization say, no, it should have to go back to a ballot referendum, and it should have to follow a process in order for that to occur. So that's some of the tension that's being addressed now. And then there's some regulatory issues, who's going to be responsible for oversight of the industry, whether it be the treasurer's office, as it is under the bill, or some other entity, that's being looked at. And then as a result of taxing and the ability to locate or not locate, that's creating some tension between medical marijuana facilities and recreational marijuana facilities. And I know there's been an application filed for a dispensary here in the town, I think it may have been two years ago, two and a half years ago that might have been filed, and that application is just basically sitting there without any action, having been taken on it. So a lot to be seen on the marijuana front. We could have the House voting on a bill as soon as tomorrow, that was the plan, perhaps not. We were told today that we should be prepared to vote on a senate version of the bill next week. That now is uncertain, so we're just going to keep, keep our eyes and ears open and get ready. It's a big issue.
Is it twenty-eight percent dead, or is it?
Um, it, that's the, that's the version that was recommended by the, the special committee, and that's, and because it came out of the House, that's kind of the House number. I think you'll see.
Cigarettes are more than forty percent.
Yeah, they've got so many hidden taxes in there, federal and state, and I think they're, they're pretty substantial.
Coffee gasoline.
Yes.
I can't see why marijuana would be less.
Oh, it's a.
Well, I guess it's, I guess it's, the black market is what plays into, into action here. Cigarettes and, and gasoline really aren't readily available on the black market.
We have legalized black market on our boards, cigarettes.
And booze, yes. So it's, it's going to be a very interesting debate.
So the question, Rick, I don't think the question is, you know, twenty-eight percent or lower, I think it's twenty-eight percent or at some point of fifty percent, right? Is that what the, the figures that were thrown out?
Uh, that, there was a figure that was put out that wasn't entirely accurate. At first, it was reported yesterday at eighteen point seven five percent, then it came out at twenty-eight percent, and then there was some that had seen fifty percent somewhere. But I think the, the version of the bill that was released today has it at twenty-eight percent, which is substantially beyond the twelve percent. And the twenty-eight percent includes a five percent local tax. Five percent of the revenues generated in a municipality would stay in the municipality.
Does that come back from the state, or is it filed there?
I assume it would be probably processed the same way that meals tax are. This is just an assumption, not having gotten into the details. My guess would be it would be collected, calculated at the state, and then remitted back, much like the sales taxes, meals tax and so forth. Meals tax is the one I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Great.
On behalf of the town, I'd just like to thank you for all the tireless work you do for your senate district in especially Holbrook, and, you know, you're very responsive. I know every time I pick up the phone and call, you're always quick to get back to me, and I'm sure it's with all your constituents, and I want to thank you for, for coming tonight and, and being here.
I think it's good just coming here and meeting with people. How often is that?
Oh, we try to do that at least, you know, every other month. We do a, we do a rotation where we've, we've been out to breakfast, we'll do breakfast in town and advertise it, we'll hold it downstairs in Town Hall, we'll have office hours, and we've done them over the library as well, so we try to, to rotate how we, how we do it. And just, if I can say, thank you, Chairman, for your comments, and also a very fortunate Mark Cusack and Representative Ron Mariano, are great partners to work with at the State House, and anything that, that comes up from the town, we're in pretty regular communication on. So I just want to acknowledge the work that they do, and again, they could be here because they've got their hands full with marijuana right now.
We're a small town, and you give us a lot of attention and it's a brief year.
Thank you.
You were, you were talking about working with Chief Smith, I just want to recognize him very, very fast. He, he actually enrolled in Suffolk University Certificate Program in Local Leadership, Public Safety, and Community Challenges. The program was a hundred and fifty hours of advanced management leadership education program. It consisted of the following six courses: public budgeting and financial management, strategic leadership and decision-making, information-based management, grant writing, label law, public human relations management. And it was comprehensive and intensive curriculum carved out from a nationally accredited MPA program. So I just wanted to recognize the chief. We actually have a certificate here for him from. from...
Thank you.
Senator Keegan?
Please.
One, two, three.
A lot of people want to do that.
of the Sumner Field from July 1st to August 26th for a family fun night. We have Denise Hickley, how are you?
I'm Jerry Butler, I'm representing the Holbrook Coalition of Churches, and we're looking to see if we can get approval to use the Sumner Field on August 26th instead of the original date which we had at July 1st. And the reason for that being, we just discovered that Grandtree is having their annual Fourth of July celebration on July 1st, and they draw a big crowd from surrounding communities, and we didn't want to compete with that. The idea of having this as a family fun night for the entire town, all the residents and their families and their children to come and enjoy the afternoon, we'll have all the churches represented with games to play, as well as bouncy houses for the little children, free hot dogs, popcorn, some free lemonade, and then the movie night, the night in a park with the movie. So we're hoping we'll be able to get approval to use August 26th now, if that's okay.
I'm assuming the superintendent, is that date available, Mr. Ekl?
Have you applied?
Yes, I did that approval from the DPW, DPW.
Correct.
They said that that date was okay.
Correct.
It was open. So we've got that resolved.
And it looks like it's just, so it's just a change of date?
Change of date.
And we have certificate of insurance reliability coverage?
That's been covered.
So police details or detail present for the event per the recommendation of Police Chief?
We will contact him after we get approval for the date, make sure that's okay with the Police Department.
Any comments?
It's already approved at once.
Just a change of date?
Just a change of date.
Okay.
So that's okay?
I know that the board has elected approved the request for the Holbrook Coalition of Churches to move the date of the family fun night at the Sumner Field from July 1st to August 26th, subject to the same conditions previously discussed.
Great, thank you, I hope you all come that night, that afternoon.
By Selectman Sheehan, all those in favor?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I hope you all will come.
We have a proposal from Brookville Bible Church for an interior and exterior improvement at the Council on Aging Senior Center, 9 Jewell Road. Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm Jean Douglas, and I'm representing Brookville Bible Church, and we have a project that we are requesting your approval for some updates and renovations, not really renovations, but cosmetic things for the Council of Aging. The needs that have been identified that needs to be addressed are windows need to be cleaned, the walls need to be repaired, the large bush in front of the building needs to be trimmed or removed. We had a professional landscaper come out, he did a very thorough assessment, and we will be fulfilling all of his requests if our proposal is approved. We'll also fill all of the flower beds, the entire front yards need to be upgraded. The fence that covers the water heater needs to be repaired and painted. That is really not any change, we won't be doing any construction, we would just be repairing that tall fence and painting it to make it more attractive. The small garden at the rear of the building needs to be replanted. An outside seating has been requested by some of the seniors, and we will be buying two tables, two six-foot tables with six chairs each, which would make 12 chairs for sitting outside. The scope of this project is specifically interior painting of the large conference room, the kitchen, offices, the back and front, front door and the back door. In addition, we will be cleaning 16 windows. The exterior landscaping, as I mentioned, was assessed by a professional landscaper, and I won't go into all of the details of what that will entail. However, we will have seven crews that be working on this project to make sure that it's done on a timely manner. The project will be implemented in five phases. We've, this is phase one that we're doing at the moment, you know, getting approval, and then we will go through the other phases, I won't go through those. Of the timetable, we anticipate that this project will be completed in about two weeks, we will start, excuse me, will start in two weeks after we have received approval. Now the timetable, we will be doing this project on one Friday night, three Saturdays, one Saturday for painting, another Saturday for doing landscaping, and then we will come back in October and do plant some bulbs for the spring of 2018. The management of this project will be arranged by members of the Brookville Bible Church, and one of us will be on site at all times to make sure that the project is meeting and exceeding the expectations by the interim coordinator. Brookville Bible Church will be responsible for any broken items that may occur during the time that we are working at the Council of Aging. The town of Holbrook will not be responsible for any personal injuries that a crew may sustain, you know, during the time that they are working. The budget that we have described, or I have described in this proposal, will be financed entirely by the Brookville Bible Church. The cost to the town of Holbrook is $0. Please accept our proposal. Any questions?
I think it's great. You know, I'd just like to thank the Brookville Bible community for proposing to do this. My only comment would be, is there any liability issues that we see, or is it...
It would fall under our liability insurance, I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay.
We appreciate you stepping up and helping us out.
Thank you.
Need to vote on that?
Probably.
Good. So we accept the proposal of Brookville Bible Church?
I make a motion that we accept the proposal from the Brookville Bible Church for the interior and exterior improvements at the Council on Aging Senior Center at 9 Jewell Road.
Seconded by Selectman McGee, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Hi Cindy.
I'd like to thank them, they came forward to us, it was really a great project. It's really gonna, it improves our spirits and, you know, and it was really very, very nice of them to come forward, and I want them to know how much we appreciate all that they're going to do for us, and, you know, and it's great, it's just wonderful, we're all coming together, you know, we're all coming together, and seniors are really going to be so surprised and so happy, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have considered the year-end appropriation transfer request for Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B.
This is a request from the Veterans Agent, I believe it's to cover the cost of the Memorial Day, the flags that are put on the graves, and also for veterans' benefits, where he was a little bit under.
Any questions on that?
The amount requested is $1,350 to be transferred from health insurance account 01-914-5173-019 to be transferred to Veterans Account 01-543-5770-0000, and the present balance would be $545.88.
Seconded there. Motion made by Selectman Moriarty, seconded by Selectman Moore, all those in favor? That's five to zero. Next, we have discussion about the area land on North Shore Road abutted Lake Holbrook. Tim, do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Sure, yes, Mr. Chairman. So late in May, we received, I believe it was addressed to the Selectman, no, I guess it was to myself and to the DPW and to Inspeccional Services. It was a letter concerning some work that was, some brush that was being cleared and some trees that were being trimmed down on North Shore Road area. And the resident that wrote the letter had also called the DPW in the past and had spoken with the Conservation Commission, so I thought best to put it on the agenda and let the voices be heard as to what the concerns are, and we have members from the Conservation Commission here to comment as well.
Okay. Did you want to speak on it, Mr. Stinson?
Yeah, please.
Was it you took these pictures?
Uh...
You take these pictures?
I took some, yes, I believe this is what I took.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, I have some colored photos too, they're the same ones, but I just have one set of them.
For the record, I'm Tim Stinson, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, and Tim Gordon forwarded the letter to me for this meeting. And I know this fellow, I don't even know what his name is, but he's been down there cutting shrub along the shoreline and in the areas adjacent between the shoreline and the roadway, mostly on the North Shore roadside that I'm aware of for some period of time now. So I took a drive down there, it was like a week and a half ago, just to see what was going on, and as I drove around, he was out there, so I stopped, you know, took a look around, and you can see where he's cut, what he does, he cuts shrub and what we call saplings, small trees, that aren't really trees yet, but they're about two inches diameter. So he then piles them up, and I understand that the DPW then picks them up, the debris, and disposes of the materials. So from the Conservation Commission's standpoint, you know, we took a look through the state regulations of 310 CMR 10.00, which is the state regulations on wetlands, and lakes kind of fall into a funny category somewhat. And reading through it, under the 310 CMR, vista pruning is allowed, it's an allowable activity within a wetland area or a buffer zone area. So that kind of made it kind of borderline, so then we looked up the definition of the buffer zone and the bordering wetland area, and the definition, again, in 310 CMR defines it as the soil has to be saturated and inundated. The soil up there is high and dry, it's mostly, you know, gravel and boulder and rock. No sign of wetland plant life, no signs of inundation of the soils or anything. So our commission met this previous Monday night, and we discussed it with the lady present who submitted the letter, I believe it was Mrs. O'Brien, and we discussed it at our commission meeting, and our board came to the conclusion that we don't have jurisdiction. It appears to be an allowable activity under the wetland regulations. So we informed her that, you know, we really don't have any authority on that issue at that location due to the nature of the lake, the wetland issues and that type of stuff. So our board is, you know, we're kind of removed from the jurisdiction there, so we can't really take any action on the individual. And I know Richie Crumbs is here, who's also on the board, and, would you like to come on?
I would, I would, sure.
Okay, I know Richard, Rich, oh, okay, I know if you want to speak as a board member also. But again, looks like we have no jurisdiction that we're aware of, so we informed the lady of that. Now, she has a right, she can go to DEP and make an appeal of the filing and let DEP look at it, but right now that's how our standing on that issue is. And the pictures we, I took, which I guess you have copies of, kind of shows the area out there, and I know...
I've been down there numerous times, and people stop and say how nice it looks, and, you know, it really, really does look good.
It does, it's, and it's one of those things, I always tell you, at least from the Conservation Commission, there's two issues, there's two sides of the story. One is a legal issue, jurisdictional issue, and the other side's an emotional issue. And somehow, people seem to think that Conservation Commission, we can stop your neighbor from doing something in the yard, or people from doing different things. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. But we have to look at it from the legal jurisdictional side. We try to keep out of the emotional side, and that's what we were hoping we did Monday night. I don't know if you have any questions that regard, or...
Any questions from the board? Who owns the property?
I believe the town owns it.
And this is being done on a voluntary basis by just a neighbor who wants to help out?
Yeah.
In conjunction with the DPW?
Yeah.
DPW is picking it up and chipping it.
It appears the individual, when I was talking to him, you know, everybody has a hobby, it's, to me, it's a strange hobby, I don't even like cut my grass, but he's going into poison ivy and ticked land and God knows what's in here, thorns, and he's claiming all this stuff out of there, and, I look, I say, hey, good luck to you, you know, I wouldn't do it.
Would you like to comment on this?
Yes, I would. My name is Barbara, I live at 42 North Shore Road, I've been there since 1994, my sister was there since 1968. The lake looks very nice over by the picnic area, it's a beautiful view coming in. However, once you get past the picnic area, there are houses there, and I don't think that that shrubbery should be taken down just because somebody wants to. The reason is, just in the last week, since the brush was taken down across from my house, now it's become a party area. Down by the benches and the picnic tables, that's fine, but you've got kids, you've got fishing people, that's fine, but they're drinking, they're making noise, and they're parking in front of my house and across from my house. I took a picture before I left of two trucks just sitting there, the two men inside there were just drinking and being loud. My point is that I think this was started because of the drugs, the kids were going into the brush, I even complained about that. But that brush stops way before the houses do, and I don't think it makes sense to turn brush that's across the street from me into an extension of the picnic area, because that's what's happening. Everybody's just moving down to where they can hide. He can't take down all that brush, and in my opinion, he shouldn't. If it were left up to me, what he cut down across the street from me would be thrown back in there and the brush allowed to cover it again. That's what I wanted to offer. I think that it's safer the way that it is. It's peaceful and it's private. You cut it all down, and everybody thinks it's a beach area for them to come and sit in front of your house and do whatever it is that they want to do. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Mary Ann Ryback. I think what they're doing is a wonderful job. I see less drugs there. I see less kids hanging in that area, because you can see what they're doing. It's cleaner, the grass is growing better, the trees are looking better, there's ducks, there's geese. I don't know what happened to the white ones with the orange face, they've disappeared, but it looks better. You see more and more families there fishing, there's more areas to fish at, there's kids there playing, their parents are there at the picnic event. They even put a bench over on the side. I think they built it themselves. I think it's good that the community comes together. And tell them they're doing a good job and they're doing something. Don't keep knocking everyone down. I think if you clean it up, they have less places to hide. I wouldn't go between, there was an area that was like an alleyway where they went, and I finally went there. I've been here 35 years, I would never go through there. I walked my three daughters there, now it runs them, and we walk there, and we stop there, and we love it. We go to Walmart, we get the bread, we feed the ducks. He has his Dunkin' Donuts sitting there, and it's nice. It's clean, it's healthy, it's like what it was when I was with my kids. I think he should be commended. I think if I could help him in any way, I would. I also feel that it should continue. Just clean up the brush, clean up the junk that he's cleaning up. There's no trash. Other people I see come on Saturdays when I rock at seven in the morning, sometimes they empty the trash pail, take it, put in big bags, and that's again, give them back to the community. These people are doing that for nothing. I just hate to knock down something that seems to me working and it looks nice.
Thank you.
One more thing. The man's name is Steve, and I think he should be commended. I have said we should go and help him and take up a collection for him for the good that he has done, but the drug had not stopped. All they've done is move down closer to where I live. I think they should just be brought rid of. Initially, what they did is take the brush and shove it in there so the guy couldn't get back in there to have their part. Now it's being pulled out and getting more work for them. I keep that with the alcohol store, that's another place for picnics. As far as geese are concerned, the geese are concerned, they're nasty. If you walk with a happiness, there's nothing here goose poop now for the last 10 days. I think that sometimes you can make things worse by opening up something because somebody had a great idea.
Maybe to help out with the drug issue or whatever, maybe the chief could send down some extra presence down there. So, if people see the extra presence with the police, they might not tend to go to that area because of that reason, so that could help out.
Any other comments?
I think the area looks nice. It's, it's...
Hi, how are you all?
Ladies. My name's Rich Coombs. I am a volunteer upon the Conservation Commission, but I'm speaking as a citizen, like I did the other night. It's absolutely wonderful what he's doing. As long as I live in this town, that was open. People are fishing, enjoying it. If you could have seen last Sunday, even the weekend before, there's families down there, they're enjoying all of it. When I first moved here, that was all open, but lack of maintenance. We don't have that much manpower in the town to maintain it, so you have a gentleman volunteering his own services. I've talked to him, I tell him how well he's doing. They actually asked me to ask him to slow down a little bit. Being a volunteer, seeing a guy volunteering more hours in one week than I am in a month, I couldn't tell him to stop. I had no reason to tell him to stop. I actually fish there, and I'm going to say, before he started, when I first moved here, I could go from, I'll call it the dam, for lack of a better, all the way to the end and fish anywhere. And now, I'm going to say, before he started, he might have had three or four spots that you could kind of squeeze in, and he really kind of needed hip boots. So, he's kind of put it back the way it was. And I don't know if you've been down there, but it's absolutely beautiful. And I think, I agree, he should be commended. As far as in front of our house, it's extremely thick there. I get where she's coming from. But other than that, I mean, it's really looking beautiful. He kind of, I don't know what else to say, but we need more volunteers like him. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my only comment would be that we, maybe we can get more coordination between DPW and the volunteer and take some of the concerns of the public into account. Because it is town-owned property, I think with DPW working in conjunction with him, we might be able to satisfy a couple of different needs that have been brought up already and focus, you know, the volunteers' efforts, you know, in a, in a way that's going to be most productive and have a, kind of like a plan versus just having someone just do what they, do what they want, how they see fit. Regardless of whether he's doing a great job and how much great work he's already done, having it planned in conjunction with the, with the town oversight, I think, would be great.
I think he's moved on to South Street now, so...
He's very, he does a great job.
He knows some rage, he too. He loves George, that's what he says, "I love my dog." He's just become like a termite on steel.
So, I think if we, you know, maybe, maybe start up from the, from where the houses are, keep it where the, the benches are going. I, I think he's done there for this year.
He's done a wonderful job, and I think everybody loves it. It's beautiful. But sometimes you can just ruin things by trying to change something because you like it, spoil all the people who live there.
I've lived here for 58 years, and I want to say it has never looked better than that pure yet. I love walking, I'm 84 years old, I love to walk around Lake Holbrook. Before I moved here, nobody could see that beautiful lake. I think it's a blessing to have a lake. Not every town has a lake. And I think it opens it up so that everybody can enjoy it, especially seniors that are out walking. So, I'm in favor of whoever did that brush removal. It's never looked better.
Thank you. Okay, so, it's an asset. We could just try to show it up. Best we can, maybe we can send him down to Selden Lake now, work along there, Center Street, clean up that one.
Maybe we could hire him this summer, help.
Yeah.
Next, we have a vote to authorize the Communications Director to proceed with an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Rockland for dispatch services.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Board members. So, before you is an intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Holbrook and the Town of Rockland for dispatch services, police and fire. This is, I'm very pleased to report that this is a, this is what we needed, the Communications Center needed, to bring us to the next level with the 911 Department. Once we get to this point, we'll be at the highest level we can be at with grant funding and stuff like that. This agreement will bring in $564,000 in additional revenue to the town. Now, with that being said, we obviously have to hire some more staff. We have to change the organizational structure a little bit with the Communications Center. The 911 Department would like to see that. They would like to see a deputy director, somebody in charge of training, quality assurance. They want to see some of that stuff. So, at the end of the day, it's a very good deal for the Town of Holbrook, for the Communications Center, and for the Town of Rockland. So, with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think it's great. It's, they keep, keep building and building on it, and it's, I'm sorry...
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may add, first of all, I want to, the amount of work that Steve has put into this is just phenomenal. I mean, he has been straight out on this, so I just want to thank him for, for all of that effort. And, and, secondly, I just wanted to say that we're still work, we're, Steve and I started going through the budget today just to plug it into the model we have to figure out, you know, the revenue versus the added expenses, and we'll, and we'll, and it's still positive at the end of that. So, we still need to scrub that a little bit. And then my final point, and Steve, you could comment on this, is I talked earlier about, you know, doing some work on the public safety building. This, this project, this, by adding Rockland, there, there is a likely construction project coming out of it that...
Correct. So, I should add, as, as the board knows, we applied for a $3.7 million development grant with the 911 Department to add on to the public safety building for the Communications Center. So, this is really the first, this is, this is the first step in getting that grant. 911 wants to see progress, so this is going to help us get that grant, hopefully. With that, with that being said, this year, 911 made $12 million available, and there were $48 million in requests. So, they have a tough job ahead of them to decide who gets what. But this, as soon as this intermunicipal agreement is signed, I'm going to hand deliver it down to the 911 Department the next day. So, this is definitely going to help us and help that grant project move forward. And that $3.7 million is a no-match grant, so...
Excellent.
I know all the other towns that we've taken on, it's just fire, I don't...
Fire and police.
It's a good question. So, the other towns, the police departments were not interested in coming over. The Town of Rockland, initially, the fire department was the only interested department in the town interested in coming over. So, as, as we progressed with the fire department, the police chief expressed interest, and we met with him a few times, and now he would like to do it as well.
Now, would they all be able to fit in that building currently?
No. No, we can't do, we're out of space. We could do the fire depart, so, we have five positions in the Communications Center, five dispatch positions. One of them is in my office. Most days, we have four people working. With Rockland, we're going to have to have another person there. So, if I move out of my office, we could, technically, we could do the fire department. We would not be able to do the police department and the fire department in our existing facility. We would need to add on to that building.
How are you going to do that now?
We're not, we're not. We can't do it. We can't do it until we get approval from 911. So, this is a process. So, this is step one in the process. Both towns agree. It goes in front of the 911 Department. They have to agree to fund it. They have to give us some money to do it. The building is part of that. If they say, if they, I mean, they could come back and say, listen, we'll give you money to do, do Rockland Fire, but we can't fund the, the expansion this year, we'll do it next year. We, we could start Rockland Fire this time next year, but I would have to move out of my office to another part of the building, and that's another issue that we have, because we're out of space there. So, we have some challenges ahead. This isn't, you know, as easy as it think, as it looks, but...
Are we becoming one of the, under your leadership, are you, are we becoming one of the bigger centers in the South Shore?
Yep, we're already one of the larger call centers. So, I, I will add that there was a lot of negotiation, you know, we have competition now. There's a number of these things popping up. We, there was a lot of negotiation between me and Rockland to get this, and there were some, some other centers that were looking to get Rockland. Luckily, at the end of the day, we were able to pull it out. But that's what we're going to come across down the road as we continue to add on.
So, with Rock, Steve, it started out as a little, let's try it, new business, as I call it, a few years ago, and it's growing and growing under your leadership, which is a great thing and a great thing for us. How many more people would you have to hire to, to handle this?
So, my goal would be to hire a deputy director, three dispatches, and I would like to hire a, an IT person, at least a part-time IT person, because the technology between the computers, the microwave, the radios, it's very advanced now. I spend a lot of my time dealing with problems. So, this IT person would work for the Communications Center, but would be available to all the public safety departments, because they're, they really are connected to the Communications Center. So, if the fire chief or the police chief had an issue with a piece of equipment, this IT person would be available to assist with that. So, that would be the goal. And there's plenty of money to, to do it.
Okay. I think it's a good deal.
It's a great deal.
Mr. Chairman, motion?
I move that the board select me authorize the chairman execute an agreement with an intermunicipal, primary fire and police department dispatch system between Town of Rockland, Massachusetts and the Town of Holbrook, Massachusetts.
Second. Motion made by Selectman Moore, seconded by Selectman Moriarty. All those in favor? It's five to zero.
Thank you, Director. Thank you very much, Mr. Steve.
Great job, Steve. Next, we have to discuss and set the FY18 ambulance billing rates. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board. As we do annually, it's that time of year to set the ambulance rates, you're going to print out in your packets this evening. Just a brief history, going into 2017, we hadn't adjusted the rates in some ti, going into FY17, the year we're in now, we hadn't adjusted the ambulance billing rates in some time. We made a fairly sizable adjustment that year. This year, going into FY18, I've reached out to our billing, billing company just for some insight as to trends in the local area. And as you can see on that spreadsheet, comparatively speaking, approximately 60% of the towns in the South Shore that they work with are utilizing that Medicare plus 200 column. Medicare, the Medicare rate is typically used as a benchmark. Currently, we're at the Medicare plus 175. I asked, I asked them to add in an intermediate column, Medicare plus 175, in the event the board wasn't comfortable with that drastic increase. And I think that that, that would be a good intermediate step if the board were more partial to, to, not having two years of fairly sharp increases. The other items that are on the lower half of your spreadsheet are all just additional items that are billable. The recommendation was to keep those rates at their existing rate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So, so everything on the bottom would be, stay the same, is that right?
Correct. Those numbers are the same as what's currently being charged in FY17.
Okay, yes.
So, you recommended the 175, Chief?
200.
Oh, 200, sorry.
The, the... The colored, the one that's colored.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, the two, well, 200, to, just to be clear, 200 is what the majority of towns in our...
Area.
In our general area, generally speaking, are using as their rates. Again, there are some disclaimers here, I'm sure there's different mileage rates and so on and so forth, but just as the base rates, that's, that is the, that is the majority surrounding us. As I, as I said, we had a significant increase last year. We're currently at around 150, and so I asked them to add in that 175 rate in the event that the board was, didn't want to have two years of, of sharp increases. I kind of am partial to gradual increases personally, but it's really the prerogative of the board.
Now, that mileage, is that $25 per mile?
It is.
Per mile. Any questions from the board?
No. I move that we accept Chief McFadden's recommendation for Medicare plus 200% for FY18, I guess, right?
18.
With the adjustment to BLS base rate fee, ALS1 base rate fee, ALS2 base rate fee, and leaving all other fees as is.
Second. Motion made by Selectman Moore. Motion made by Selectman Moore, seconded by Selectman Moriarty. All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. The position of the council on aging coordinator effective July 1st, 2017. So, this was posted, this has been posted about a month ago, that...
Okay.
And, so it's a 20, $25 per week position, and at the time of posting, good, Mr.?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, yeah. So, we posted this job. We had Ms. Cindy Brennan as the interim that was appointed in January, if you recall, to finish the fiscal year. As we got closer to the fiscal year, we posted the job in order to get a permanent person. And subsequent to us posting it, Cindy Brennan expressed an interest in staying on, and so we ended up with three applicants, three, three really strong applicants for the position. And you have the resumes there. And one of the applicants is Cindy Brennan. So, I think there was sort of a timing issue. I don't know, I mean, it would have been up to the board, but if we had known earlier of Cindy's interest, you know, we may have, we may have handled this differently, I suspect.
So, is it, there was a deadline for the post, the job posting is closed now?
It is.
Okay. So, I guess the question to the board is, do we...
Does the board, would the board like for me to...
Interview?
Interview candidates, or does the board want to make a decision based on current operations and...
Myself personally, I think, you know, great, glad to have Ms. Cindy Brennan. She came on in December. She was only going to stay for six months, but she, since she's been in there, she's really getting a lot going on, and I think she likes it a lot more than she thought she was going to. And my recommendation would be to keep Mrs. Brennan as the director. I don't know if there's any other issues in the board.
Similar to what just happened with Mr. Stinson, he put his resignation in and took it back. The fiscal year hasn't ended. She's still the director. I don't see why we wouldn't keep her. She's doing a great job, and she's severely interested in doing it again. I don't see why we shouldn't, why we should change.
I think that's a good analogy, you know, the ti, it ended up, seemed like it was more of a timing issue. And, well, I was just going to say, I mean, we're talking about process here, but if we were having a conversation about performance and what's been going on over there, and the activity and the level of energy, we'd be here all night, because it really has been remarkable from all accounts, so, thank you.
Did the Citizens Police Academy finish yet? That's that, yeah? No, I was asking how the Citizens Police Academy went with the seniors.
Wonderful. We didn't go to jail, which was good. The fire department came in and gave us a CPR course. I call Benji for everything every day, and he's always over there. We've, I'll give you my report now, all right? We've gone to Captain Jack's. We've had social elders come in and do a lunching on caregivers. We've had, we've mingled with Avon somewhat, so we have some trips going on with Avon. We're trying to bring it all together. Hook from Bible came in today, and Father Tim from the St. John's is interested in commingling with us with the kids, the after-school program, which we want to do. We've got so many trips going on, and we've got so many things planned. We have a men's luncheon on Monday that all you non-invited, so I think I've hit almost every one of you, if I've seen you, just to tell you, that's Monday. We have some professionals from town coming in, and of course, our seniors are invited. We had a women's luncheon last month that was great. We had a really good time. We've had Cinco de Mayo. We've had, we've been trying to do a lot, and the biggest thing we've done so far, and I thank Denise for this too, is we've had, we do, we've done fleece quilts, and for Annie's Kindness Blankets, they're called, we've done maybe 20 of them. We're, and we've done, right now, we're knitting, they're called chemo caps, for cancer patients. And we've just started a pink ribbon pillow project for people that need those pillows when they're on their seat belts and whatever. Those are the things we're doing for the community, and that's what I like to do. And we've got everybody up and moving, so it's, it's good. And we're trying to take care of everybody. We're trying to take care of our elderly and our seniors that want to move around and do whatever. And, you know, I invite you all to come over sometime. You know I'm yelling about space, so you know that I'll be bringing that up often. Where, no matter where I am, I'll be there. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to let you know. And, you know, we're involved with social elders. We have a New Tascapic picnic coming up in August. We've got Avon fishing game that we're going over in July, and Christmas party was a lot of fun this year. So, I, you know, I thank you guys. I was very hesitant at first. I'm not hesitant anymore, and I really like to thank the volunteers that, because they know a lot more than I do, and they've come in and they've helped me, they've supported me so much, and even the people that work for it too, you know, but volunteers that come in on that everyday basis, and they're there answering the phones and serving and checking the shed to make sure we have all the medical equipment. I thank, I thank them from the bottom of my heart. And the newsletter is, whoever gets it now knows it's like nine pages long, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, we would just leave that, and then it would just come up next week on the...
Appointments?
Annual appointments.
All right, I'll contact the two individuals that applied.
Thank you. We've authorized the chairman to execute a contract between the Tri-Town Water Board and Woodward and Curran Engineering Service, Cachado River. Actually, I skipped one, I'm sorry. We'll do that one afterwards. We want to speak a little bit about this one. This is the Tri-Town.
Okay, so, there's two Tri-Town contracts here. We've, we had a meeting today, actually. So, this one here has to do with doing some scientific, you know, science work and do some testing in the, in the Cachado River and, and the, and the, and the, let's see, let me get my notes.
Richardi Reservoir?
Yeah, the, yes, and the Richardi Reservoir. And so, it's both surface water and groundwater. The contract here that the Tri-Town Board has voted on is to take a look at that water. It hasn't really been looked at, and in addition to that, they've got to take a look at all of, you know, incorporate any work that the state or the federal government has done, so that we have sort of a consolidated status of that area, both the surface water, which is the river, and the groundwater. So, that's what this particular contract is about.
And this is Hoboken's share, which is 15% of the overall fee, $7,500.
And one of the, one of the benefits to this is, I know that Donald Cologne has often, the librarian, not that I'm shifting gears here, but he says, you know, "We've got all of these volumes of information on water supply," and I think, I think one of the, one of the sort of secondary benefits to this will be a summary of what's been done, and it will be, I think, informative. And the Tri-Town Board feels the same way.
Great. Any questions?
I move that the board has selected and authorized the chairman to execute a contract between Tri-Town Water Board and Woodward and Curran for engineering services, Cachado River and Richardi Reservoir, with the town of Hoboken 15% share, not to exceed $7,500.
Motion made by Selectman Moore, seconded by Selectman Moriarty. All those in favor? Five to zero. Now, we have the vote to authorize the chairman to execute a software agreement and license support agreement between Lawrence Braverman Associates LLC and the town of Hoboken for fiscal year 2018.
So, this is as it, and you could add, Mr. Chairman, to that motion for a total cost of $1,675, if you'd like, because if you look at the contract, it's a standard contract, the price isn't in there, but there is an invoice that totals that. These, the Lawrence Braverman Associates, the vendor that we use for our current general ledger financial software, so, we won't be using them for the entire year. This contract includes use of them for the first few months, and then it also includes obtaining historical data, so that we have it when we're on the new system. If we need to go back in time, we're able to do so.
Can we go live July 1?
Live July 1 with the general ledger, yeah, and then some of the treasury modules will come on subsequent to that.
Okay. Any questions?
I move that the board has selected and authorized the chairman to execute a software licensing and support agreement between Lawrence Braverman Associates LLC and the town of Hoboken for FY 2018 for the cost of $1,675. Motion made by Selectman Shear.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Moriarty. All those in favor? It's five to zero. Next is to authorize the chairman, vote to authorize, the DM, vote to authorize the chairman to execute a contract between the Tri-Town Water Board and DNC Construction Company, Inc., for the Great Pond Dam safety improvement, not to exceed $157,500.
So, Mr. Chairman, another, another Tri-Town contract. This, if you recall, back in November 2014, town meeting voted to appropriate funds for the repair work and improvements at the Great Pond Dam, and this contract, the engineering has been done, and now we're at the construction phase, and this is the contract to perform the construction.
And this is also Hoboken's 15%?
This is, that's correct, yes.
Any comments, questions from the board? See none? I move that the board has selected and authorized the chairman to execute a contract between the Tri-Town Water Board and DNC Construction Company, Inc., for dam safety improvements at the Great Pond Dam, with the town of Hoboken's 15% share, not to exceed $157,500. Motion made by Selectman Shear.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman McGee. All those in favor? Five to zero. One abstention, sorry. Next, we have vote to enter into an agreement to amend the town administrator's contract, and this is, we voted on it last meeting, executive section, to agree to amend the town administrator's contract, Section 8F military leave, by increasing the number of paid military leave from 10 days to 17 days, effective in fiscal year 2017. Any questions on that? Anybody else here for that?
I wasn't here, I haven't read up on it.
Okay, okay.
So, this is in conjunction with the statute, the state statute, it was 17, so we're equal with what the state is recommending. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? It's five to zero. Now, we have a request for carryover from 2017 to fiscal year 2018, and we have Police Chief William Smith, seven days, Chief Mc, excuse me, Chief McFadden, seven days supervisor in public works, day and daily, five days out to boil, 10 days, 60 hours. Marjorie Godfrey, 10 days, 70 hours. Stephen Hook, Communications Director, seven days vacation to be used in fiscal year 2018, and the remaining eight days to be added to his sick time per his contract. And then we also have Town Treasurer, oh, just for, for the Assistant Town Treasurer, I'm sorry, 15 days carryover, and that's signed by the Treasurer, Paul Diesel Atomo. Any questions on that? No, seeing none. I move that the board has selected and granted the following request for vacation carryovers, which I just did.
Just a little second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just a point of order. I want to make the board aware, and so, the collective bargaining agreement is 10 days, and so the 15 days is an exception to that. I just want to make sure you're aware of it, that's all. I'm not saying that you shouldn't support it, but the collective, I believe the collective bargaining agreement is, you're allowed, he's in the clerical union, and it's a 10-day limit that you can carry over.
If the department...
That...
If the department...
Oh, all right, so all these others that are less than 10 days, they do it anyhow? Okay, so, just for clarification, apparently, if it's less than 10 days, the department head has the authority to, to actually approve it.
In the clerical union.
Okay. Lester, he's asking for 15.
So, so...
10, 10 is allowed, allowed to carry. He's now at 15, it's not really on 50 days, 15, so now he's required additional days.
For the Assistant to add, so increase what he can carry over. Does he want to carry over 15, or he's looking to increase?
No, no, he won't. He doesn't have the time at the end of the year to take the 5. He's already cumulative over the last four years, up to 10 days now. And now, he's still got this year, 17, he's only taking five of his original 10 vacation days. So, he's got five this year not carrying. So, he's at 15 total days vacation days.
Okay, I think that was my bad. I've been corrected, so, if it's over 10, it requires board of selectmen approval. So, the request coming to you from Jack is appropriate.
How many days does he get, Paul? Because carrying 15 seems to be a lot.
No, he's not carrying 15, he's carrying 5. He's, he's now five or the 10 that I can prove.
So, he's carrying over 15?
He's carrying 15 days.
Well, that's a lot of days he's carrying over.
Is that from last year?
No, that's from, he's added up over the last four years. He hasn't taken a school two weeks since he's been...
Right, but when you carry over, you have to use them within that calendar year, isn't it?
Well, I can look that up. I can check. I don't know the answer to that.
No, anyway, if you have to do it, you can just...
No, no, so he's carrying, he's carrying over, but what you're saying is he's carrying over from two years ago.
He's, he's carrying five from 17, he's carrying five from 16.
Which you have to use in the calendar year. When you carry over, you carry it over for a year.
You use the...
But, but, what you're saying, he's carrying it over from 16, into 17, now into, into 18.
Yeah, he's got 10 now. He's had, he had 10 last year, but so he carries. He only used, fuck, he had 10, he had another 10.
I'm not getting, I'm just trying to see it.
No, 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 he had 10, carried from 16 into 17. On 17, he got another 10 days. Now, he's used only five of the original 10 that he's carried over, so he's got 10 from 17, he's got now five from 16.
He's got that 18, well, Paul, that's way too... He's got that 18, well, Paul, that's way too much to carry it over, 15 days.
Well, again, I know, it's...
I do know this, he was looking to take some time, but opted not to because of some soft ride training that is being conducted next week.
I'm looking at, I thought about thinking of one of these Thursday, go out here, do not talk for five days, but, you know, there are areas of tax codes to go over right now. Some of the training, some of the issues that are coming up, I've got the tax papers all on, and if he takes off, those won't, I mean, that they won't get, I'm going to give them one. So, it's just a bunch of issues. And workloads increase, the workload has increased more, we're doing more work now than we did two years ago. And I say more workloads we're doing, we're producing more schedules for backup information for everything that we now put in for a month. So, that all gets up more time. And I don't have the staff to push that off, the continuity going that I have.
Those didn't use today as a favorite deal.
So, I can't, I say you would owe him, if he's, they're trying to take it off and he can't, then...
That just seems a lot, 15 to be carrying over.
There's a better thing in this case is extenuating circumstances that, you know, we can, we can approve upon it. I'm fine with the motion as read.
So, we have the motion, we have a...
Sorry, I second that, yeah.
Okay, so that's, seconded by Selectmen Moore. All those in favor? We have a letter from the Mass State Lottery Commission, Keno monitors for Convenience Mod 779, South Franklin Street, and T-Square Food Shop, 31 North Franklin Street. I think basically this is just notifying us that they're getting them, it's not a vote for us.
That's correct.
Correct, it's just notification.
If you oppose...
If you oppose, okay.
Do nothing yet.
Okay, any comments?
No.
No?
Okay.
Very good. Oh, we got that tonight, huh? Vote the annual appointments of officials and various town committee members. I thought that was on for the next week, and that's why I said that earlier. I didn't realize it was on...
Well, we'll probably have more next week, next meeting as well? Appointments, or is this everything?
So, so, Marge, I would assume that would be in there, any with the Council on Aging Director in here, as far as just the title?
It can be added to, it's still higher.
Okay, we have, start with the Animal Control Officer, Loris Hedges, 2018, Building Inspector Daniel F. Moriarty Jr., 2018, Assistant Building Inspector. So, we would not be making him the Assistant Building Inspector.
That's correct. Let's leave, let's leave that one out.
Emergency Management Director, James Hannan, Field Driver, Pound Keeper, Loris Hedges, 2018, MBTA Advisory Delegate Designee, Matthew V. Moore, 2020, Norfolk County Advisory Board Rep, Daniel Ali, 2018, Parking Clerk and Hearing Officer, Jean Marie Torreira, 2018, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, John F. Callanan, 2018, Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Mark Grabinski, 2018, Public Works Supervisor, Dana Daly, 2018, Sailor of Weights and Measures, D. Leo Donovan, 2018, Town Council, Murphy, Hess, Tumi, and Lehane, 2018, Wire Inspector, Gerald Graham, 2018, Assistant Wire Inspector, Dave Keenan, 2018. So, we'll just...
I'm going to take that as...
Did I page my page?
Yes, so I move that we accept the appointments as, as stated.
Okay, I'm just going to...
Put up a stain.
Abstain, I'm going to abstain from the, only, only because I have a couple of things here. So, I'll abstain from this whole, whole page. Just to make it easier and less complicated for you to, so, do we have a...
I'll second the motion.
Motion. A motion, seconded by Mr. Selectman Sheehan. All those in favor? That's three with two abstentions. Next, we have Paul Stigus would like to be considered for appointment on the Board of the Council of Aging, respectfully submitted by Paul Stigus. So, was this, this was posted?
This has, I don't believe this has been posted yet, it needs to be.
It was posted today.
Okay.
However, Mr. Stigus sent this in before, there were going to be some vacancies.
There's three vacancies on the board, on the board currently, so...
So, it, it, there would be no issue with us voting on it tonight?
I think it's, I think it's fine.
There's two other positions open still, so it's not, okay.
Okay, so there's, so I made that motion, would somebody like to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Moore. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Board of Registers, Alan Dory Walsh, 2020, Conservation Commission, Frank Duggan Jr., 2020, Kevin Barden, 2020, Constables, Ralph J. Calaruso, 2018, Gerald Loomis, 2018, Mark Shanley, 2018, Council on Aging, Cindy Brennan, 2018, Catherine Brennan, 2018, Louise Curry, 2018, William Curry, 2018, Gary Newton, 2018, Mary E. Asuka, 2018, Pauline Smith, 2018, Jerane Swanton, 2018, Special Police Officers, Richard Roots, 2018, Dennis Sullivan, 2018, Armando Soto Jr., 2018, Robert DiMarco, 2018, Michael Lee, 2018, Danny Steele, 2018, Kenneth Terrell Jr., 2018, William A. Keegan Jr., 2018, James Hannan, 2018, Joseph Salvucci, 2018, David Riley, 2018, James Graham, 2018, Holbrook Historical Commission, Pauline M. Smith, 2020, Carol McDonald, 2020, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Daniel Ali, 2018, William J. Smith, 2018, Benjamin F. Ecoard, 2018, Luke McFadden, 2018, Brian McCauley, Fire Department, 2018, Paul Callanan, Board of Health, 2018, James Hannan, Emergency Management Department, 2018, Permanent Cable Television Advisory, William Buckley, 2020, Margaret M. Brady, 2020.
Motion made by Selectman Moriarty. Seconded by Selectman Sheehan. All those in favor? That's four with one abstention. Next, we have Permanent Veterans Memorial Committee, Gary L. Newton, 2020, Dwight Nelson, 2020, Recreation Commission, Joan M. Brown, John Flanagan, Annette Grenon, 2020, Town Forest Committee, Adam Fabian, 2020, Town Scholarship Committee, Daniel J. D'Esso Jr., 2020, Tony Board of Appeals, Steven Zabowski, Scott McClellan, Associate Member, Steven Zabowski, 2020, Scott McClellan, 2018, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Michael Fleming, Citizen at Lodge, 2018, Deng Neng, New York Citizen at Lodge, 2018, Daniel F. Moriarty III, Selectmen's Rep, 2018, Energy Committee, Francis J. Duggan Jr., 2020, Gerald Graham, 2020, John Moriarty, 2020, Permanent School Building Committee, Local Budget Official or Member of the Finance Committee, Peter Mahoney, 630, 2020, One Member of the Community, HVAC, Frederick White, 630, 2020, Member who is the MCPPO Certified Patricia Lugo, 630, 2020, Town Administrator, Timothy J. Gordon, 630, 2020, Local Official Responsible for Building Maintenance, Michael Bulger, 2020, and that's it. So, we have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm sorry, I missed it, but did, did you do the Recreation Commission?
I did.
So, I wouldn't mind reaching out to them to see if they are still interested in serving before, if, if you could, if you could be willing to frame the motion around all of the above except, and then I'd like to call them to see if they're still interested, and if they are, then we could appoint them at the next meeting, would that be okay?
Okay. Okay, we can do that. So, we'll just, you'll reach out to them, and we'll just, by the next meeting, we can find out if there's interest.
I just want to see, see if they're still interested, what they have planned for activities, and if they're still interested, great. If, if they're not, then we'll, we'll put something on the webpage and, and find some folks that might be.
That's right. I move that we accept the appointments as stated, except for the Recreation Commission, which will be done in two weeks' time.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Sheehan. All those in favor? Four with one abstention.
I vote the Council made, you're backing them just for a moment.
Is that filled, or are there still two vacancies?
Still have two vacancies. And we, we put something out on the webpage today, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Next, we have the...
So, there are 11 totals, and with Paul Stigus being appointed, we have nine.
We have the public safety updates, Chief Smith.
At the last meeting, I brought before you three proposals that you voted on. After that, me and Town Administrator Gordon drafted three proposals, amendments to the contract, to the patrolman's contract, they have to, except the lawyers right now have to be approved, once the, our town council approves it, it'll go back to the union to vote on, and I'll bring it before you next week. It's the assessment blow for the sergeant, the commander, and the dog officer coming out of the police.
So, this is time sensitive, too, is it?
Time sensitive, yes, yes.
Yep, so, next week, we would have...
We'd be requesting if the board was okay with an off-schedule meeting next week. We can, I can send out a, an email to see what night is best for you all, unless you know now, could we do Wednesday night at 7:00, 7:30, or?
That's up to the board. Anyone else?
That's fine.
Should we just stick with 7 o'clock?
Yeah, 7 o'clock, next Wednesday.
Right, so, so I think, so next Wednesday, it would be, it would just be the board, it would be...
Voting on the amendments to the contract.
Right, so we, we would have to do executive session, right, and then open session? So, it'd be executive session for, to just go over what it is?
Right.
And then come out of executive session and vote on it, so then, in the, in the, the union would have already voted at that point, well, they, they would have already voted on it. So, then, the chief will, after that meeting, he will, between next week and the following meeting...
I'll bring before you candidate for commander and a candidate for sergeant. I'd like to have the, the two sergeants on the list, I'd like to have them both to review, just, just to be fair about it.
So, I just want to make sure the board understands what, what the proposal will be, just so they have time to think about it over the week or whatnot. So, right now, we have four sergeants.
We have, currently, we have four sergeants. One of the sergeants, we have a stipend to make him commander. They want another sergeant to fill the slot, so the four sergeants are all road sergeants. And the commander would be working Monday through Friday with me, right in the department.
So, from a civil service perspective, you'll have five sergeants.
Five sergeants. The stipend for commander is not a civil service appointment, it's like an internal promotion within the department, like detective or something like that.
Great. Questions? Do you lose someone on the street then to fill, if you're bumping him into the office Monday through Friday, then, does that create another opening for you to fill?
We have one more slot to fill currently right now, but the civil service list isn't even out yet. It's not even going to be out until probably September, and by the time we get someone in the academy, it's going to be the spring. Academies are already booked up all the way till, I think, January's next academy, they're going to open up anyway, so. Other than that, we've had a real bad week this week, we're down three cruisers. One of our cruisers is up at Fort Devens with a recruit for EVAC. The other one was in a bad accident, it's being repaired. The other one had a major malfunction that's waiting for parts to come from somewhere in the middle part of the country, it's being overnighted. And the other one's being traded in, and it's got an issue that can't drive it, otherwise the town's going to owe $1,000 or wreck to the vehicle, and I don't want to put $1,000 or wreck into it, so it's going to sit to be traded in.
Sure, you could have Director Hook's expedition.
So, hopefully, the part will come tomorrow, we'll get that car fixed, the other two cars is going to delay. Hope, the two new cars we could, we changed, we used to buy from MHQ. MHQ was so backed up because they'd always take on the state police, they'd push this way off, we'd get our cars in September and November. We went with a different, went with Colonial down in Plymouth, they've promised us, they said the cars are already there, they promised us the new cars, pushed two weeks in July. So, that should really help out, we'll get rid of these old cars. Second thing was, we did evidence training, me and two sergeants went to it, we found out that we have a lot of deficiencies in the department, we got to correct, we've corrected one with the camera already. The other deficiency was an alarm system, it's being put in this week. We also have to buy a safe inside the evidence room to contain drugs inside the safe, even though it's in an evidence room, it has to be inside a safe. We have to get a larger refrigerator for rape kits to hold, and we have to do a major purge, which is, we have evidence going back 20 years. So, we're going to start July 1, purge and stuff, hopefully get rid of 75% of inventory. Only two people will have codes to the alarm, there'll be an alarm on the outside of the door, there'll be an internal keypad also, so once you go through the first door, you got to hit this internal one on the inside. The alarm will sound in dispatch, there'll be a red revolving light that'll immediately notify them if someone's violated the zone, and notify me and the duty supervisor. And we hopefully have the evidence wrapped up sometime in July, get it all streamed out, but it's across the state, everyone's trying to square it right now because we're having a brain tree, and the training was excellent, you know, these guys came in from the midwestern part of the country, and they, they told us how it was, and it's a lot, a lot of problems. Because we have our drug container out front where people drop off unwanted drugs, now they say we have to have a buddy system, two guys go to it, two, two keys, open it up, go down, bring it to the evidence room, lock in the containing with two locks, each person only has one key to one lock. It's very complicated now what they want done, but safeguards everyone against any kind of temptation or anything. All the money we have in the evidence room will no longer be kept in the evidence room. We're going to take it and give it to Paul. Paul's going to put it in the account, it's going to be held in the bag somewhere, and when the case is disposed of, we turn back to Boston, we disperse the money out. It's better for everybody that you don't have any possession of any money anymore. Right now, we're ponying on it, $20,000 maybe in evidence and money, but some departments have a lot more than that, so we hope to get rid of that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
That's about it.
Chief.
Good evening again, thank you. Just want to extend a thank you to the BFW, the Vet, and the Legion Post for the invitation as the first meeting we've been back at since Memorial Day. been back at since Memorial Day, thought it was a great event this year. Uh, as always, they graciously extended an invitation to us, uh, as well as a lot of the other town, um, bodies, Little League, and Police Department and so on, and a great, great event this year, the weather was much better than last year, and just wanted to say thank you publicly for that and for the support of the board as well. Friday, I've been quite busy the past couple of weeks since my last report, uh, we were with virtually all the, uh, all the elementary schools over the past couple of days as they, uh, conducted their field, field days, which were a big success. Uh, in addition, um, the inspections at the new school, um, are nearly complete from the perspective of the fire department, uh, we were with the building inspector, uh, wiring inspector, health agent, uh, over the past two weeks as that project winds up, and as you heard earlier in the, uh, report this eve, this evening, uh, substantial completion is slated for tomorrow, I believe, uh, so that's good news as well. All systems are appeared, uh, completely up to snuff, and, uh, it's gonna be a really great building once it becomes operational. Uh, and finally, uh, the SCB grant, SCBA, Self-contained Breathing Air Press Grant, you've heard me report on numerous times, uh, is almost, is almost complete, we should be receiving a large shipment, uh, I'm expecting the very, the vast majority, ninety percent or so, the equipment should be in tomorrow, and, um, I'll give you another report in a couple of weeks, uh, as that continues to wind down. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Director Hook?
Okay, what's this letter from Lally in Brockton?
Good evening again, uh, a lot of eyes in the fire at the communication center, but, uh, last Monday we started dispatching Canton Fire, so we've been dispatching them for about a week and a half. Very smooth transition, probably the smoothest, uh, smoothest one of them yet, so it's going very well, they're happy, um, things are going well with Canton. Wireless Direct, we're still working with the nine-one department, uh, hopefully that will, will start the implementation of Wireless Direct, uh, where we will take wireless calls directly in our communication center sometime at the end of the summer. So I'll keep the board updated on the status of that, but, uh, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, this Friday, hopefully, bell traffic will be out to repair the loops on Limwood Street that were, um, that were broken by GIOSO three or four years ago, that's the problem we've had with the traffic on South Street backing down onto Spring Street. This should correct the situation there, so this Friday. Um, also, we're continuing to work in the parks, uh, potholes, we're cleaning catch basins now, um, we're doing a lot of brush cutting around the town, so, uh, we're, we're pretty busy. That's all I really have.
Actually, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, could you, could you comment on the, the big project you, your guys did down the Grove, I think that was pretty significant.
Hop on, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Timmy came to me, uh, the homeowners were complaining, the water was running through the property, was there anything we could do? Um, so what we do is we put a temporary, uh, catch basin in there with a pipe coming out of it to continue it on, but right now, this will suffice on, if it rains, it'll at least drain the puddle, so there shouldn't be a puddle there anymore.
Seems to be working.
Yeah.
Friday, the other night it was poorer than, no puddle.
That was a plus.
And it was a huge puddle when it was a puddle, and it was a, it was just a frozen ice skating rink in the, in the winter, so...
Yeah, it was a tough situation.
That was a great job that you guys did on there.
We're not, we're not spaced on there, a lot of building going on, so, a place for wiring on. But, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul, treasurer?
Um, yeah, I don't have any new updates from last, uh, you know, as I said, tax title, I'll do it at the end of each month. But I do wanna remind people, I've got a lot of unpaid water bills, uh, there's about fourteen hundred taxpayers that are still outstanding that haven't come in yet, so, and it's gaining interest at fourteen percent, so I appreciate if they'd come in by the end of next week and try to get this settled up.
Very good. Thank you.
It's really important because we're, we're, we've got a bit of a, we've got a bit of a deficit brewing if people don't pay their water bills.
So we, uh, I got this tonight from, uh, the Veterans Agent, this was, um, flown over the Capitol Building on, um, Memorial Day. So we have, uh, just came in from Congressman Lynch, it's, um, the flag of the United States of America, this is to certify that a company flag was flown over the United States Capitol at the request of the Honorable Stephen F. Lynch, member of Congress. This flag was flown over the United States Capitol in honor of the hundredth anniversary of the dedication of the Mary Wills Holbrook Park Memorial in recognition of the two thousand seventeen Memorial Day observance in the town of Holbrook, Massachusetts, and it's signed by Stephen T. Ayers, which is the architect of the Capitol.
That's awesome.
Take that, um...
Take it, yeah.
Taken afterwards. We also have one from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and this is, um, enclosed is the Governor's Memorial Day proclamation, I am sending this to all three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in the Commonwealth with the hope that you will be able to include in your Memorial Day ceremony, should you be able to find this time in your program. And this is, uh, signed by Governor Charles Baker, Lieutenant Colonel Karen Polino, and William Gavin, the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Do we have any citizens' comments before we close? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, I, I was, Selectman McGahey was asking me about, um, a letter that we all received from, uh, Brockton City Councilor, uh, Jack Lally. He came into the office, Marge, I hate to put you on the spot, but what did he have to say about that, there's a project in Brockton, and it's a construction project.
He just said it was close to, to the Commonwealth, and that he wanted to invite all the members of the labor, he was feeling like to come and speak, learn up there and work on the project, he's going to want to speak to all the projects.
We're meeting the same day, so...
Is that next Wednesday? Yeah, all right.
Could you maybe reach out and find out?
Find out.
What it is and...
Sure. I'll call.
Okay. To adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy as it relates to litigation, Norfolk County Agricultural School, not to return to open session by roll call vote. Seven, yes. Yes, Dan, yes.
Dan, yes.
Matt, yes. Matt, yes. Thank you very much, have a good night.